Vice Chair Hall, if you please stand.
That's great. Lord, we thank you for a beautiful day that you've made. We thank you for the beautiful poppies on the west side of town. Father, I pray that you would bless this evening and bless each commissioner and the business as being discussed. And Lord, I noticed that we're discussing the drought in the valley. And Father, I pray for more rain, in Jesus' name, amen.
Face the flag, hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now the roll call, please.
Commissioners Diana Cook.
President.
Ryan Christ.
President.
DeSantis Harvey, absent. Raj Molly.
President.
Fabian Tarasiano.
Here.
Vice Chairman Randy Hall.
Here.
Chairman James Fols.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay for the entire meeting, we offer two minutes at this time for anyone who would care to address the commission on agendized items. Do we have any early speakers?
We do not have any cards at this time.
All right, thank you. Any person who would like to address the commission on any agendized item then is requested to fill out a speaker's card and you will be called on when the item is before the commission and you will be given three minutes to address the commission. Tonight, we have a relatively short agenda. The first item is our consent calendar, which is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 17, 2014. May we have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting of March 17, 2014.
Thank you.
Second that?
Thank you. Any comments? Please vote. Vote six zero with Commissioner Harvey absent. Tonight, we have a presentation from Los Angeles County Water Works, the presenter, the principal presenter is Greg Even, I believe, however, there may be more. Looks like there's more.
Actually, Craig David, our area engineer, will be in the presentation and give the questions we're here to answer.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And if you'd state your name for the record and introduce your colleagues, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's quite an honor to be here and to talk about the drought situation. My name is Craig David and I am, as Craig mentioned, I am the area engineer for LA County Water Works Districts. I manage the local office here in Lancaster. I'm also a resident of Antelope Valley and have about 100 staff that work in the office. Anything from engineering to fixing leaks to pumping operations, the billing. Probably many of you are customers, so we hope we're giving you good service in all these areas. As far as my esteemed colleagues here, Greg Even was the gentleman that you just spoke with. He is head of our new water development and water resources section. And we also have Daniel Lafferty, who is our principal engineer for Water Works. And they'll be happy, along with myself, to answer any questions you may have concerning drought.
Thank you.
Thankfully, you've got this up. As many of you know, we're in a drought and have been in a drought this year. Can't get my clicker to work. Try the other way. Not getting the clicker to work. But anyway, we've been in actually a three years' worth of drought. 2012 was below average. 2013 was one of the driest years on record. There's a mountain. And then also this year. Oh, it's not working. Let's see if we can get that going. Hang with this for a second. Technical difficulties. Well, if need be, I can, I'll grab my presentation, we can walk you along with it.
It's all right. Maybe our staff can figure it out for you. I'm sure you can, if you want to wait just a moment.
Okay. First slide you see here is recent edition of the U.S. Drought Monitor. Basically, the darker the red color, the more the severity of the drought until you get to the maroon or brown, whatever it is on your sheet there. And you can see California kind of plays a spotlight for the west. And it's not just that it's been this year, it's been several years' worth of drought that's made it very difficult for us. Next slide. This one is, shows the rainfall and precipitation throughout the state. And we get most of our rainfall, most of our precipitation from the mountains. They ended up, it ends up going to the aqueduct and gets pumped down here for our use. And you can see the rainfall, if you can see the wettest year is the green line, eighty-two, eighty-three, very wet, about eighty-eight point five inches, all the way to the driest at the bottom, nineteen seventy-six, seventy-seven. The blue line is kind of squiggling up through the middle there is this current year. As you can see, we actually made the record for a brief period this year. We were the lowest for up until we got that last big rain. But even now, with twenty-six point seven inches, it's not real comfortable. You know, the average is the area shaded in blue. And you can see that we're still quite a bit below that. And you combine that with the last several years of rainfall or lack thereof, and it's turning out to be a little bit difficult for us. Next slide, if you would. And this shows a snow survey summary of all the, a lot of these areas are contributory to the aqueduct which we get our water from. And you can see it's only at 25 percent, so which is not very much. And this is a graphic illustration when you look at Folsom Lake, Folsom Dam. Last year before, we had below-average rainfall. That was in 2011. You can see how full the lake was there. And this, this year in January of 2014, you can see quite a dramatic difference. One of the things someone pointed out to me is even the green areas in 2011 aren't green anymore, you know, and this is right in the middle of winter. One of the things that I wanted to point out is that we, as Water Works District, get about two-thirds of our water from the state water aqueduct, state water project. This year, in January, the governor declared a drought and Department of Water Resources actually decided that they would provide zero allocation for all the state water contractors. As you can tell, that put us in for quite a shock. You know, water, we, down here in the Antelope Valley, we don't have a convenient, nice, large reservoir to pull water off of. We're very dependent on getting the water from the aqueduct, so it was very scary for us. That zero allocation is actually going to come up to 5 percent, we just heard over the weekend, but that's still a very low amount of water. And we're not getting any support, yeah. We were actually, just like someone with change in their hand, not much to spend, we were trying to calculate how much water we'd use over the year. What surprised us is over the winter, these are historic highs that we've had, about 30 percent more than we've been used to because of the warm weather. And you may have noticed, you know, even yourselves, everything is starting to bloom early, people are starting to use water. Well, that was another thing that we found was unexpected, is a whole lot more water usage. And still, it shows January, February, March, we had the same until the rain. It was higher than normal usage, which is, we don't have any water from the aqueduct, it's got to take water from somewhere. So the next slide, I'll show you. So what have we been doing for drought preparation to, you know, get ready for all of this? Well, we've been doing groundwater banking out on the west side in AVEC's water bank. And the idea is if you have more water in a good wet year, more water than can be used, it can be stored in the ground. Basically, you can see a picture there, it's dumped onto these big lake areas, percolates into the ground, and you can pump it back later when you need it. That's exactly what we're doing this year. Water that's put in the ground, we're pumping it back so that we can meet our everyday demands. The other little pot of water that we have is carryover from 2013. And that's, what they mean by carryover is, in years past, when AVEC has ordered water from state water project, that they've had some water left in the reservoirs that weren't actually taken. We have about 8,800 acre-feet from that that we're using, and that's all part of the pot. We're boosting our well production all over town as much as we can. We're starting to get in trained air in places, I hope that if you're one of our customers, you don't get too much of that, but we're trying to boost wells, water as much as we can. We're also going full force with our conservation programs. If you are our customers, you may have heard the rush nine eleven calls to urge you to conserve water. You may have seen the billboard, or we have several billboards, probably the one you may have seen is going north in the fourteen, near the animals or people to sign, trying to say the drought is on. So that's, as far as looking forward to the future, we do, we now have a memorandum of understanding or agreement with AVEC to acquire additional water supply for new development. New developers want to come here, they want to go ahead and build a new tract, new project, there's a mechanism that they can go ahead and purchase water, make a deposit, we'll work with AVEC, AVEC will go to try to work a deal with other water users to get more water. So that took us a long time coming and that's, we look forward to that in the future to help us with our water supply. This is a pie chart of everything that we're using right now. You can see a big part of it's the blue area, that's what we're pumping out of the ground right now. The green and the yellow areas, the carryovers, the water I told you about in the reservoirs, the banked water is what water we have just on the west side. And the deficit, we're hoping that deficit is going to drop to nothing with a little more water from the state and hopefully with demands. Now, what worries me about this whole chart is that the left side, the green and the yellow are one-shot deals. I mean, once we use it, it's done until you get the next rainy year or a series of years that you can replenish that. That's the worry if we continue on for next year, and next year helps to be a dry year as well. So we'd be just depending on the, on the blue, so it's not really a comfortable feeling that we have. So move to the next slide. So how can we meet that deficit if we end up? The thing is, you know, we can't necessarily predict what our demands are going to be at all times. Really largely depends on the temperatures and so forth. And just like the winter months, we were surprised how much more water people used than we thought they were going to. Could happen any time in this year. But if we get into a problem where we can't make up that deficit, there are some options that we can do. There are some farmers, local and far distant, that we, they want to sell water, at least for this year. The problem is, and they will be able to get that water back in the aqueduct. The problem is, is that's more than twice the normal cost. We end up paying about maybe $400 an acre-foot, that's going to be $800, $900 an acre-foot. The other issue, what we're trying to do is, we have a lot of our wells just naturally, have naturally occurring arsenic in the water. It's just part of, part of the geology up here that we have. And it's, unfortunately, it's very expensive and very intricate to treat that. But as, you know, drought conditions continue or continue to have water problems, that is something that we are seriously looking into doing, is providing some arsenic treatment. But again, that will double, you know, the cost of water. We're hoping on a short term and long term, but certainly we're hoping for quick results by asking for voluntary conservation. I could talk a little more about that in slides beyond. We were talking about recalling construction meters. We're not considering that now, we're leaving the meters that are out there, out there at this point. We aren't allowing new construction meters at this point, mainly because we're worried about the, about next year as well. And if it got bad enough, we do have provisions that we can provide a mandatory conservation surcharge. And this is within our rules and regs. We don't want to have to go there, but it certainly is there. And if you go to the next slide, I think that'll, a few slides from now, I guess it'll talk about that. One of the things that the governor, when he declared California to be a drought, is he set up a drought relief fund. And he's asked for projects that we might be able to submit to help us get there. And as you can see, these projects below arsenic treatment is a big issue. We can gain some more supplies if we're able to actually treat, do wellhead treatment at our, at our wells. Chromium six treatment is relatively new, you may have read about that in the newspapers, it just happened, I think it passed on the fifteenth of April of this month. It's, it's a, it's a big deal for us because it's going to cost us a lot of money. A lot of our wells may not meet the new requirement ten parts per billion. And so that's going to be a big chunk of money to be able to treat that water, to be able to provide some supplies. Recycled water project, those are, I know the city of Lancaster is very familiar with their end, we're also working with Palmdale for their side, for their trunk line. Turf removal project, currently we're providing a dollar an acre, a dollar a foot to be able to remove your turf. This is, we think this is a good project, this is a way to get people to, you put in zero scape or drought tolerant type landscaping instead of lawns, so that's money that would be well spent. As I talked about with the water conservation, we are requesting 20 percent voluntary and it's, you know, trying to assist customers through conservation programs, we'll talk about that shortly, promote awareness through public outreach. Here tonight to talk to your commission is one of the things we're doing, but there's many areas, and we'll talk about them in the next slide, if you could go there. We're trying to, we have billboards, as we mentioned before, on our bills, we're calling people back to say please conserve water, giving people pledge cards, give them, you know, what can I do personally to save water? We're doing these at our outreach, we're going to be there tomorrow, next weekend at the Poppy Festival, any local festivals that we have. Flyers, we're going to schools, and I don't know if, has anybody heard us on the radio? No, we've got a few out there though, we're just starting. Somebody today heard some, so we hope we get those out more and more. If the situation gets worse, potential additional measures that we could take, requesting the board, I meant the board, that would be the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors to implement mandatory water conservation pricing. And there's different phases that we could go to depending on the severity of the drought, I think one through nine. We were contemplating perhaps going to, I think it's phase three, where we charge, everyone that uses 80 percent or less of the water won't be affected, but if you use more, then you get a surcharge on top of your additional, on top of your additional usage. And at one point, we're not considering this, at this point, but recalling construction meters to reserve water supplies for potable use. Right now, we're not considering recalling existing construction meters. We would, we do want to have people that are using construction water to try to go to recycled water as much as we can, that's something we are trying to push. It's an appropriate use for it and it's the best use for it. So that's it. We're trying to make it fairly short, certainly open to hearing any questions you might have.
Questions might be longer than the presentation. Thank you, David. Appreciate your presentation today and certainly thank you for, you all for providing the information in advance of the meeting, gave us an opportunity to review it. But at any rate, the members may certainly have some questions for you and for the remainder, or the other members of your team today. We certainly appreciate you being here and sharing with us.
Enjoy the opportunity.
So if anyone, go right ahead, Ms. Cook.
What is the process to treat arsenic water? Can you kind of go through that with us?
Just in, basically, we, in investigating how to do arsenic treatment, we did visit some other facilities that were somewhere nearby, some that weren't. But what it is, it, the treatment process that I saw was two different ones. One used a, like a powder, like a iron oxide type of system, big tanks where they pump the water through. Arsenic likes to stick with iron. So the idea is that you basically filter the water through these iron shavings, if you will. I'm oversimplifying it, of course, but the idea, and then you flush that water out. You eventually get to a point where you have some waste that you have to take care of at the very end, but your water can be non-detect when you do this. It's just expensive to do. The expensive part is setting up the facility, the maintenance of the water treatment or the water facilities, and also the disposal of the waste when you get it done. You've got a concentrated arsenic source, you've got to get rid of it somehow. There's also resin treatment, which is another way Coachella Valley is doing their arsenic treatment.
And although it's expensive, after that treatment's completed, what's the purity of the water? What's it comparable to?
It's, well, as far as arsenic, it's focused right on arsenic, so it's non-detect after it's done, through, going through that process. In fact, it's designed that way to be non-detect. Or if you want to save some of your filter medium, you can blend it, you know, the maximum contaminant level is 10 parts per billion. You could, you could take out, you know, say you had something that had 20 parts, you could blend it down to something around 10 or say 12, and then blend it with other water that doesn't have arsenic, so the result is below 10. There's lots of ways to do it. The more you filter, the more you use that, that medium, the more it's going to cost to replace it. So we're new to the field, we don't have any arsenic treatment facilities now. One of the things that we've, we've been interested in, a local project is in-situ arsenic treatment, where water is pumped up to the surface. And U.S. Geological Survey, they did a study out on the west side, near, near the bank, where they, they're the water bank that I was just talking about. They put water in the ground and the top part of the ground very effectively absorbs, I think because there is a lot of iron in the native soil, it actually pulls it out. So the water below can be non-detect. So that's, we like, you need space, you know, for situations like that, but that, we would prefer something along that line if possible. But as far as speed and getting it going, the block, called black box treatment, you know, you, you put arsenic water in and out comes clean water, and the other side is quicker, not cheaper, but it's quicker to put in. And, or, Greg, you got anything perhaps to add to that?
Just on the in-situ, you know, even though the in-situ is, can be cheaper, there's kind of a limited life, obviously, once you reach a certain saturation of the soil absorbing, it, over time, you know, after 10, 20 years, that starts to decline off. So it's not a permanent fix. It's not like you can remove the media like you can at a black box treatment.
All right. Anyone else got some questions?
On parts per billion, can you kind of give me a way of visualizing what a part per billion is?
I just saw in the newspaper the other day, it was 10 drops in Olympic-sized swimming pool.
So 10 parts per billion would be 10 times 20, or 100 drops in Olympic-sized swimming pool of arsenic would be considered contaminated with arsenic?
Might have to go 100, 100.
100, yeah.
Because 10, 10, if you put a dropper into an Olympic pool 10 times, you're over the limit.
So barely a milliliter of arsenic per.
It's a lot less, yeah.
So how long have we been able to detect parts per billion?
It's not, hasn't been extremely long, 20 years?
They reduced the standard from 50 to 10 about.
About nine?
What was that, about Peter nine years ago, wasn't it? About that, yeah, about that.
They being our state legislature?
U.S. EPA.
The EPA?
Environmental Protection Agency.
And also the California Department of Public Health also adopted the same standard.
Moving on to the chromium six, that sounds like some sort of rocket fuel. I hear it's naturally occurring. Can you explain what chromium six is?
Of course, it's the rocket fuel. Yeah.
Chromium, it's, again, I, I'm not a geologist, I'm not familiar with the geological formation that generates the chromium six, but the chromium six that we have in our service area is naturally occurring. If you remember, this was the Aaron Brockovich story up in Hinckley, and that was a man-made source. Unfortunately for us, we happen to be in a geological setting where chromium six just occurs as part of the geological processes here in the valley. So it's, it's going to create a problem for us to get into compliance with that, with that particular standard, but obviously, you know, we will.
There's no national standard yet, it's still a goal, but CDPH, April 15th, set a 10 parts per billion maximum contaminant level.
How much was?
10.
10?
Yeah.
10's a magic number.
MCLs, but that's, those are, when you hear the word MCLs, those we have to abide by for operating permit for our water.
There's currently no chromium six standard anywhere else in the United States except for California.
Except because of that one lawsuit?
Well, we don't know, but probably.
I think it's because of one movie is what it was.
Yeah.
Well, let's see, arsenic is a cumulative poison inside your body, so the more you take in it, the more you get. Is chromium similar to that, chromium six?
I don't know.
It's not flushed out by?
Yeah, I don't know about the uptake in the human body or how that, how that takes place.
Yeah, unfortunately, our water quality expert is none of the people here.
Yeah, we're not the experts. I know it does break down to three, chromium three.
Yeah, that's part of the treatment process, is to, to break it down into a more, less, less toxic version.
So we don't really know what chromium six would do to the human body or?
Us three don't know, but I think, I think it's out there, they do, I think that information is out there.
Okay.
We make sure that we abide by all the water quality standards, but we're not necessarily epidemiological experts or medical experts as far as what, what actually happens.
Yeah, usually these, these studies are focused on a certain vulnerable portion of the population. And then within that vulnerable portion of the population, there's, you know, one individual and, you know, 1,000 or whatever that.
They do studies.
Yeah.
And based on that, they come up with a, you know, first goals and then maximum contaminant levels. And there's state, a lot of times the fed, the federal levels are less than the state. You know, the state can't be less than the federal levels, but they can be more strict, which is often the case for California.
Yeah, the federal levels are typically less stringent than California's water quality standards.
California leads the way. On banked water, has it raised the water table on the west side?
The banked water?
Yeah, I would, I would say not appreciably. That program is one that we started with AVEC probably, what, about three years ago? I think it was. So, and there hasn't been that much water, quite frankly, to be able to purchase and put in the ground ahead of time. So I'm sure there has been a change, but not an appreciable change.
Yes, drought hit us at a really vulnerable time. We're starting to get all the mechanisms in place to handle, you know, good periods of having no water. And this is, we're just starting to get it going, it's like we got a new Ferrari, but we don't quite have the gasoline to, you know, run it very far. So, so that's kind of how it is at this point. We've got 10,000 acre-feet in though, so it's, we're happy about that.
One of my neighbors asked me to ask you guys, he says that he's very conservative with his water. Turns it off in the wintertime, lets his yard go brown, very conservative with his water and his household use. When you decide to do your, how did you call it?
Cash for grass.
The mandatory conservation.
Yeah, the, will you measure his baseline off of what he's historically used, or would you measure it off of his neighbor's use?
It would be based on, I can answer the question. It would be based on a threshold that would be for his class of service. So he would, it would not be him individually, it would be more of a threshold overall. So if he were on the low end of, of usage, he would be well within, most likely well within the 80 percent, you know, reduct, or usage, which would, you know, to get the 20 percent reduction.
You said we have enough water for development?
Yeah, well, we, we have water for recorded maps that have recorded prior to basically 2008. And then we're requiring new development to come in and purchase new water supply entitlement. And that will secure their water supply for the, for the future, for their, their projects.
Have you given any consideration to the KB Homes, Home of the Future out there? We took a tour of that recently, and they're doing an awful lot to really lower their water usages. Will they get any kind of break on that development cost for plugging in their meters, or is there any plans for that?
So, you know, the way that gets reflected, we track overall usage within the districts. And over time, we have seen that number begin to go down. You know, as water supply planners, it makes us nervous when you talk about programs that it's very hard to institutionalize in perpetuity. it's very hard to institutionalize in perpetuity. Because it's our responsibility to make sure that the supply is there in perpetuity. If you have a homeowner, and you have a home builder, who happen to agree with what you intend to do with that property at the beginning of it, you may get somebody in there later that has a different mindset. And it's very difficult to make sure that you're getting that long-term, forever savings out of some of these programs. But one thing we feel more comfortable with is looking at the long-term trending. We have a 10-year rolling average of what that water usage looks like within the districts. And as that drops down, we feel confident that we can drop down what we consider to be the minimum amount of water to be used for a particular home. So I guess what I'm telling you, saying is, there's going to be a lag time. There'll be a lag time between implementing these things, and then we see that effect, and then we can react, knowing that we've got some confidence in what's going to happen in the future.
So he's really on cutting-edge, Tom DePrima of KB Homes, so he's got a lot of work ahead of him.
Well, that new water Greg was talking about...
I think the answer was no.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I think that was your answer.
Yeah, the new water Greg was talking about is very expensive.
I'm very familiar with that mystery.
Yes, I'm sure you are.
Yes, I am. At any rate, go ahead.
I have a couple more. There's farmers out here that are pulling out of our groundwater tables also, and I was wondering, farmers versus homeowners, what is the usage difference? Do they use a little more water than homeowners, or do they use less water?
Yeah, I would, I would say that, now, don't quote me on this, but, you know, based on the stipulated judgment for the adjudication, the, you know, that's been set at 110,000 acre feet to pull out of the Annapolis Valley groundwater basin. I would say, I would estimate that municipal pumpers are probably in order of 30,000 to 40,000.
Well, that kind of, they may use more overall. I think the question is, an individual farmer compared to an individual homeowner?
Oh, by far. But even overall, comparing all of the municipal pumping versus agricultural pumping...
Correct.
The agricultural pumping is far greater than the municipal.
So if the farmers reduce their pumping by 20% usage versus homeowners reducing it by 20%, we would have a far greater effect on water?
It would. The only problem, though, is that the facilities need to exist in order to be able to take advantage of that. So a farmer cutting back his pumping may make more groundwater available, but then I, as the municipal supplier, have to have the groundwater extraction capacity and the pipeline capacity to make use of that.
So the, so your chart, talking about 30,000-plus acre feet for your jurisdiction, plus all of the other municipal and, not municipal, but whatever they're called, can't remember. Things like West Side Park and all those, that's another 10,000 acre feet. So roughly, you have 55, 60, 65,000 customers or so?
Right.
In your, so they're, they're using 8 tenths of an acre foot per customer somewhere in that range? Am I saying that about right?
Yes, yeah, approximately.
Okay.
Were you just, what, you were taking the total demand, or just the pumping?
Well, no, you were talking about the groundwater, and I'm assuming from the, from the supply chart you provided...
Right.
That AVAC is considered groundwater, because it comes out, it comes from somewhere.
No, no, no. That's, the, only the blue is what comes out of the ground, the rest of it is actually coming from, it actually originates from the state water project. Even the bank water originated from the state water project.
Okay, I meant, thank you for the clarification. You may have some more questions, I'm sorry.
So lately, we've been seeing news in the, about the water lawsuit that's been going on for the last, what, 20 years, 15 years?
Yeah.
And it's supposedly coming to a conclusion. Do you have any, does that mean that private wells will be metered?
So the way the, the end, the end game, when this is all said and done, the judge has made his final decision, what ends up happening is, there is a specified amount of groundwater that can be pumped each year. And only those folks who were party to the lawsuits and acquired rights during the lawsuit had those rights sort of secured during that process, will have rights to pump that water. So there will be a water master that is created, that is a body that makes sure that all of the provisions of the lawsuit are being followed. Part of that process will be, if you pump, yes, you will have to report that usage to the water master. Water master will be responsible for making sure that you didn't overpump, or that you aren't pumping when you're not supposed to be pumping. So at the end of it all, there will be a mechanism to make sure that all the folks that have wells are living within their means, based on what the adjudication says is the limit.
Charge you a fine if you overpump.
Charge and fine if you overpump.
That's how the other adjudication...
Typically, that's the mechanism.
Will they look at a meter, or will they look at their electrical usage, or do you have any...
So usually what'll happen is, it'll be metered, and there'll be periodic audits of those meters by the water master staff, to go out and verify that the meter is accurate, and that you read that meter accurately. And on a sort of annual basis, it's self-reporting. You have to report to the water master what your usage was, and then every two, maybe three years, the license should come out and verify that your meter is reading correctly, and that what you reported is accurate. And if it's not, you face some pretty stiff penalties. The intent is to take that money then, and replace that water. So one of the, one of the purposes of being fined, then, is you've overused. So in essence, you've damaged everybody else around you because you used more than you were supposed to. So now they've got to go out and replace that water. So they'll fine you, and take that money, and then go out and purchase water, and put it back into the groundwater.
Will the water master be in a elected position, or an appointed position?
You know, that's those, those nitty-gritty details are all the things that are still going on in the adjudication.
Well, no wonder it's taken so long.
Right.
However, the explanations you offer are, as the principal litigators in the adjudication, right? The County of Los Angeles Water Works District is one of the principals that brought the suit. Did that be about right?
We answered. We weren't the original initiators, but we certainly got involved early on.
Well, what you're presenting to us is, sounds a whole lot like what's been offered to the courts as a settlement.
What I described, down the other side of the hill, all those bases have been adjudicated, and that's how they work.
And other parts of California, too.
And in fact, yeah. All up and down California.
One would assume from that, that the courts would find a similar...
Yeah, we would think it would be something similar to the end of the day.
Okay, very good, thank you.
About 20, 25 years, and they end up with the same.
I'm near the end here.
You, go ahead.
Lately, there's been a lot of talk of the Delta smelt, and a lot of people down here are kind of concerned about why our water is being diverted for fish. And I've also talked to people that said that they've seen water laid out in areas for migratory birds, and our dams are being torn out so we can have more water flow through the wild rivers and stuff. Is this kind of putting ecology or ecological management above what we need as consumers of water?
Yeah, I think, you know, this is one of those questions, it really depends on your perspective. I think the state is trying as best it can to balance some very divergent competing interests. It's very difficult to manage your water supplies, to ensure that you're getting enough water flowing south for people to consume, while also maintaining ecological balance in the Bay Delta area. You know, the Bay Delta, you know, we talk about the Delta smelt. The Delta smelt doesn't have a whole lot of economic value, per se, but is an indicator species. And the environment in that ecosystem is, drives a lot of economics when it comes to the fishing industry, for example. And if that gets out of whack too far, there's an economic impact on that side. So I think the state is trying very diligently to find that balance point. And I think, in the past, perspective at least, it's been, that it's been too far on the side of providing water supply versus making sure you've got the environmental side taken care of. I think, at the end of the day, we will find a way to make that whole system work. The Bay Delta Conservation Plan that came out earlier, I think that was late last year, with the suggestion of the twin tunnels, that is something that, I think, there's still, there's still folks that are opposed to that as a concept, but I think, at the end of the day, with a lot of legwork and a lot of education, I think people will find that that solution will help kind of set that balance back to where it should be. It doesn't divert any additional water out of the system. All it does is firm up the commitments that have been made for that water already. So it's not as if, one of the big fears is that we build these twin tunnels, and more water's going to get diverted to the south, and we're going to have worse ecological damage. The reality is, they're sized specifically, so that you can, we could only divert to the south what has already been promised to the south. The benefit is reliability. You'll be able to do that consistently, without having to worry about what's the immediate impact today from our pumping operations on some of these ecological values. So I think in time, we'll get there. I don't think we've gotten there yet, but I do think, you know, we've got a plan in place, we've got a roadmap in place. I think it's really just going to be about education, and people getting used to that concept, and understanding what we're, what's happening.
So how much infrastructure that we had has been torn out to mitigate the environmental loss?
You know, I'm not aware of any that's been demolished at this point. What has happened is a change in operations. One of the reasons I suspect, although I didn't read this specifically, that we're being told our 5% allocation has to wait until September 1st, is because of the ecological impact it would have if we took it during the summer months. So I think that's why that September 1st, although, like I said, I didn't read that anywhere, but I surmise that that's why that September 1st timeline came into place. And certainly, we have felt, in the water industry, the change in operations by the state, and how they operate the state water project, has created a ripple effect to those of us downstream that depend on that water. The ability to extract water when we need it has been reduced. It's created what some folks would argue is legislative or judicial drought within the state. It certainly has created a level of complexity that was not there before, and it's taken time for us to sort of readjust to that reality.
So what I just heard you say here, let me get this right, is that we don't really have a drought, we have people making rules that are causing the drought?
Well, we have a drought today. It's an actual, physical drought, there's no doubt about it. The rainfall patterns are off, we are well below the average. About four or five years ago, there was a decision in one of the California courts that changed the way the state operated the state water project. And at that point in time, we weren't in a drought, per se, in terms of rainfall. But because of the change in operations, it impacted the way water supply came to the south. And so a lot of people labeled it a judicial drought, because it shrunk the amount of water that was coming to the south in particular times of the year. So it kind of got labeled as a judicial drought. The drought we're in today is, I mean, saw the patterns that, you know, it's, it's, it's a real, no water falling from the sky type drought.
It's unprecedented, really, this, at least, in state water project history, it hasn't been this dry.
Yeah, last year, for example, was the driest year on record, in terms of rainfall within the state of California. Never before.
Records have been kept for what?
Yeah, since the mid-1800s.
1800s, yeah.
If I could add, there is a place where the ecology does actually affect us, and because the Delta is an open system, it brings in water from the Sacramento River and from the San Joaquin River, that collects basically all the watershed from the Sierra Nevada range, and dumps it into the Delta. When there's not enough flows, then the salinity levels from San Francisco Bay intrude. And so what happens if you don't have enough flow maintaining that saltwater barrier out, then actually, our water that gets, passes through the Delta becomes saltier and saltier, to the point where if it's not, that barrier's not maintained, then we would also be affected because we, our water quality would dive down. That's part of the reason why, with the tunnels, they would like to be able to take high flows during rainy years, store it, and then during wet years, or, excuse me, during dry years, they would be curtailed to the lower flow levels, whatever's needed to maintain the ecology in the Delta. So it's, it, what it will do, like you said, is increase reliability. Overall volume, over a 10-year period, may be the same, but we'll be able to store more of it, or take more of it when it's available, and there's excess that's over and above what's needed for environmental purposes, and thereby, you know, for drought periods, have more water stored for those situations.
So what is the number of people that the state can support with its water? Are we got future plans for desalination plants, or are we just only going to depend on what the snowpack puts in the Sierra Nevadas? Is 35, 40 million people about all the state can handle?
Well, it really depends if this is a long-term trend, or if this is a temporary trend. If this is a long-term trend that we're seeing perpetuate for many, many years, then I think that we probably already exceeded the number that can be supported. And I think, really, prices of water will drive us to desalinization. You know, San Diego is coming, is constructing, you know, in Carlsbad, the first plant. And their, their contract is for, the water's about $2,000 an acre foot. Today, we pay for wholesale water about $400 an acre foot here in the Antelope Valley. So you can see that we're still a long ways off to going that direction. Now, San Diego, because they're in the line, they see the risk on the table, they feel like it's worth it for them to have this as part of their overall portfolio to mitigate risk. They've decided to bite that bullet sooner than later, and go ahead and build this treatment plant. But it took them 10 years to get the environmental approvals to do it, and they're just now, you know, construction now.
And I think that, I think that's kind of a long answer, is that there are water supplies available. It really comes down to, how much are we, as a society, willing to pay for that water? And, you know, if you look at, if you look at how much water flows through California, there is plenty enough water in California. It's getting the water from where it occurs to where it's being used, that's the problem. And it's about building the infrastructure necessary to deliver those flows. You know, the days of big water projects, I don't think really are behind us. I think we've got some more work that's going to have to be done in the not-too-distant future, in terms of big water infrastructure, to make sure that the state's supplies, actually that the state's demands are being met by the available supplies. You know, we, City of Lancaster has taken the lead in recycled water up here in the Antelope Valley. It's another component of a water supply portfolio that is vastly underutilized statewide, not just here in Southern California, but statewide. And when you talk about the quality of recycled water these days, of what's being produced by sanitation districts statewide, most other places in the world would kill for water quality of that type. For us, we get the ick factor of, it's recycled water, it's been used before. But at the end of the day, the quality of that water is very, very good. And, you know, certainly more than sufficient for irrigation purposes, for example, which is a huge part of the water demand, especially here in Southern California.
To just answer your question about how much would people pay for water, I think they would pay any price for water if it wasn't created by a judicial drought.
Yeah.
If the lack of water was created by judicial drought, if there was actually a reason for it, other than just somebody's arbitrary, "I'm going to say that the fish is really important" type of thing. Anyway, I really appreciate your time, and I appreciate the commissions.
Back to the water wells at the water master. Is there a consideration for the farmer or the rancher, depending on what type of crop that they might be growing on that land? Some crops take more water than others. Is there some kind of a formula that's being looked at to accommodate that?
You know, I'm not familiar with all the intricacies of the adjudication, per se, but in speaking in generalities, the way the process works is, the judge is presented with data regarding the amount of recharge that takes place in the groundwater basin. That recharge is rain that comes from the sky. It's also water that we import, that we serve to our customers, goes through their homes, out to the sanitation district. The sanitation district polishes it, now it becomes effluent out of that treatment plant. That water also makes its way into the groundwater table eventually. So you have a couple of different places where you get inputs into the groundwater table. The judge hears all that, and comes up with a determination on, okay, how much can we take out, then, on an average, in a year, and not affect the health of the groundwater basin itself? And that becomes the safe yield. So that's the number that the water master is going to be shooting for, year in and year out. Now, what ends up happening typically in the adjudication is, you've got people who are pumping way more than that. That's why the adjudication begins. Somebody, their well went dry, they were fine before, somebody moved in next door, they drilled the well, now they're not. So somebody begins the lawsuit, because they got affected by the drop in groundwater levels. So typically, what ends up happening is, that number, that safe yield, is oftentimes half or a third of what the historic pumping has been. half or a third of what the historic pumping has been. So how do you deal with that situation? What ends up happening is you as a party to that lawsuit have to come and improve what it was you had been producing, year in and year out. What was your usage? How much did you use of that? That becomes sort of your, your proportionate piece of the pie. So if everybody's using three times as much water as they should to maintain that safe field, then everybody arguably should take a two-thirds cut. So it's, that's kind of in general how that all works out, is, is you have to show out of the overall pumping that was being done, how much were you doing? And then there's a proportionate decrease thereafter. So there's, there's subtleties and there's changes and variations and deals that get struck in a negotiated settlement type setting, but in general, that's the concept of, of how these things get resolved.
A lot of times, there's a water market that's developed too, you know, and say you've got a, a well that you're, or that you're not producing, you could produce, say you have 100 acre feet that you could produce, but you only produce 50. Someone over here overproduced 50, maybe you could sell them or lease them that amount of water.
Right.
So there's lots of different situations that could be set up under adjudication.
And with the farmer, once this is all a done deal, they're going to have to then look at what they were doing before and determine how much of that they continue to do based on the reduction that they are now living with. Are they going to change their crops? They're going to reduce the amount that they, they plant? Are they going to sell it off altogether? Um, you know, so there's, that's a decision point that each farmer is going to have to make to determine, you know, whether or not they're going to continue their business if their business plan continues, is still workable under the new threshold.
All right. Mr. Prossiano?
I'd like to start with a very simple question. I, I know who AVAC is. Who is the MOU?
Oh, MOU is a memorandum of understanding. So it's, uh, basically a contract between the Water Works Districts and AVAC.
It's an agreement. Yeah, sorry about that, I didn't spell that out.
I appreciate you clarifying that for me. Maps that are already in place have water allocated for those projects. It sounds like if somebody wanted to file a new map for a development, they would need to come to the district and basically broker a water deal for that project.
So what, what that MOU does specifically, it's an agreement between us and AVAC that provides a mechanism for this developer to acquire new water that is needed to supply their development. So AVAC will collect a deposit of $10,000 for every acre foot that is needed to supply a particular development. They will then go out into the water market and purchase what's called Table A water, which is, Table A is, is the water that has been allocated within the state water project. So what they would have to do is find another state water project contractor in the system who's willing to sell and then purchase that supply and then allocate that supply through us to that development.
Are these prices currently regulated or?
No, it's, it's open market.
That's an interesting question. Actually, actually, I think I should correct you, Mr. Lafferty.
Sure.
The Water Works District collects the fee.
We do collect the fee. We collect the fee.
AVAC is no part of that agreement.
Well, they, they
They're not a signatory to it and don't argue with me because I just went through one.
They, they have agreed to do their best to get the water.
Actually, I, you know, maybe they have, maybe they haven't, depends which director you talk to. Go ahead, Fabian.
I, I thank you for your time and I think that answers my questions.
Okay.
So let's talk about governance first. The Water Works District is governed by an agency that currently sits as the Board of Supervisors, but as the governing agency of the Water Works District, they are called something else, right?
They are the Board, uh, Board of Directors for the Water Works Districts.
Okay. So in our county, the rules related to your jurisdiction are the, are the five, have been known as the Five Kings, right?
Yeah, the, the board itself is the one that, that adopts
Right, okay.
Changing the rules and regs for us.
So the, the, the customers you serve in this valley, roughly 55,000 plus, I don't know what the number is, you probably know.
Fifty-six, 56,000.
56,000?
Yeah, but AVAC also serves Acton, which is another about 14, 1500.
But that's not the Water Works District, that's 37, this is 40, right?
Yes.
So this commission and this city are concerned about 40 and that portion that you serve, plus the other Water Works Districts that are within our city boundary. So my, my concern, I have multiple concerns. As an, as an advisory agency to the city council relative to the development opportunities that are presented to us and, and within our jurisdiction to make decisions and recommendations to the city council. If we're potentially facing, and you've stated, I think if I understand it correctly, you're, you're not withdrawing construction meters, you're just not issuing any. Would that be about right? Okay. However, it's within your authority or the, the board's authority to adopt that regulation at any time to withdraw construction meters.
That is actually already a regulation within the Water Works Districts. It's already stated that way in our rules and regs.
So you could do it at any time?
Correct.
You could withhold service at any time to existing customer?
On a construction meter, which is a temporary service, yes.
But permanent service, you can't withhold service?
I'm sorry, what?
Permanent service?
No.
But you can restrict the amount, the volume?
Uh, we can create financial disincentives for you to use more than what we think you ought to.
Kind of like Edison's done, raise the bill, except you don't have to go to the Public Utilities Commission, you only have five people to get three votes to do it, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to be clear that I understand what we're, we're facing because some of the decisions we make impact those customers and those expectations. Because our, our growth and development in this community is, we're either moving forward or we're moving back. You can't stay stationary. And I, you know, and I appreciate what you folks are saying regarding these opportunities that we're faced with here in this community and other communities within this valley, that you're trying to work within the system to allow progress to continue and, and really not throw a dark cloud over it, even though reality is what it is, usage is what it is. So how do you, how do you encourage people other, other than through a, literally a hammer, just to reduce the consumption of this precious commodity?
Well, we try to be persuasive and show people that there is a vested interest on their part to use less water and to, to try to be more sensitive to the environment in which they live and, and create water demands on their own property that are more consistent with the environment that they're living in.
So, so about two-thirds of your source is, is well water?
Uh, it's about
Pumped out of the wells.
It's one-third well.
Actually, in a normal year, we would bring, yeah, in a normal year, we'd bring in two-thirds of water imported from the state water project. This year, however, because of the, the low allocation, we are pumping the groundwater a lot more than we would in any normal year.
So, so your well system, as, as vast as it is, are at different levels, they're tapping at different water table all over the valley, aren't they? They're not all 2,000-foot wells, I mean, they're mostly what, 400 to 600-foot wells?
Yeah, generally, yeah. No, they, they go down to about 1,000 feet.
Yeah, I mean, typically, they're, they're 1,000 feet or less. We're typically mostly tapping into the upper aquifer. We did have wells that tapped into the lower aquifer, but we found that, you know, the arsenic levels down there are much higher. So many of those older wells, we retrofitted them to only, to only tap the upper aquifer. And then new wells since that time, we've really constrained to the upper aquifer.
So I guess the, the challenge, some of the challenges we're going to face is how we address without a, you know, without a quote moratorium or a condition of approval that, that limits the opportunity for development in our community because of the water service. I mean, we have standard requirements that, that the developer, you know, seek a will serve. However, we, our, our approvals aren't predicated on that, it's a condition of approval. So unless we decide to make a recommendation to the city council and they want to change the city ordinance, then that condition would stand. I mean, you recognize that. But the ability to secure a will serve letter, besides the normal fees and the normal capitalization costs to your district as, or to the other water purveyors within our jurisdiction, there's an additional $10,000 per acre foot or per unit, shall we say, that, that the user would have to enter into. So how do you guarantee? Let me, let me ask this first. It's prudent to, to have reserves when you're budgeting. Can you tell me what the Water Works District 40's reserve is?
When it comes to the, the supply?
Hmm, yeah, I mean, you're not operating on a, on a net zero number, are you?
So you're talking about financial reserves or you're talking about water supply?
Water supply source, I mean, you're not, you have 55,000, 60,000 customers, you're not operating on a zero reserve, you have a reserve somewhere, don't you?
Want to answer that, Greg?
I mean, we don't, we don't have any water stored anywhere except in the bank.
No, I understand you don't have anything stored, but, but how do you, how do you
Right.
Do business without a reserve?
Yeah, well, well, basically, what we've been, our planning has been based on two sources of supply. So we have first looked at what we think the adjudication will produce as far as groundwater limits for us. Then we also look at AVAC's supply and in a normal year, a normal year, where they would get 58 to 60% of their entitlement, their Table A entitlement, we would assume that we would get a portion of that. We take those two numbers together, we put that together, we look at our existing historical demand, the trends that are going on now, we add the committed demand to that and that we've basically determined at that point that we are at zero. We are, we are, the, the committed demand plus the existing supply equals the, uh, excuse me, the committed demand plus the existing demand equals the available supplies. Now, the supplies given are not things that we have secured in an, you know, I mean, you know, obviously, we've got fluctuations in state water project levels. So these are long-term averages and these are also what we would anticipate we would be able to get in any particular situ-, you know, long-term situation. So within that, there's a lot of variability and like I said, you know, in a year where there's very little supply, then we're reaching out to other mechanisms like banking, like dry year programs and so forth to, to make up that difference.
Yeah, I think the short answer to you is we don't have water supply reserves in the way that you're thinking.
Well, you have commitments, you, if I understood you correctly, you have supply commitments. Besides your customers that are online that have meters, you have commitments to other folks who have, have or had will serve letters, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So have you negotiated any downward trend in those supply agreements?
For the committed demand?
Commitments, yeah, that you, you've previously had and, and now they've been reduced. Either the development went away or you've negotiated, negotiated them down?
So the way that works for us is we don't solicit a developer.
No, I, I guess you don't understand my question. Let me see if I can restate it. If, if you had a, if you had a will serve commitment for 1,000 units and then withdrew it, you have the power to do that?
No, not once the map's been recorded.
Yeah, so, so I think to, to respond directly to your question, we don't have any will serve letters that have not expired, that have not expired for unrecorded maps. So what we're talking about, that committed demand is for lots that have been created.
Right.
And at the time of approval of those lots, they were, they, whatever local commission you or, or otherwise made a, made a determination that there was sufficient resources to supply water to that, to that lot.
Right.
We, unless that map is now unrecorded or reverted back to acreage, we are maintaining that commitment to that recorded map. So the only way legally that, that our council has seen that that water could be relieved from that project would be to revert that project back to acreage, uncreate those lots and then that water would be freed to be used on a first
So recently, that hasn't happened in your
It has not happened.
Interesting. If you care to comment on the, on the Public Works Director's letter to the cities withdrawing the allocations that, that the city of Lancaster and the city of Palmdale had, the 1,000 units that the city had and the 400 the city of Palmdale had?
Well, I, I thought the letter explained that program, both its intent of creation and why we're taking the step currently that we did take.
So you did take them back? You've taken our reserve back?
So those were never actually reserves. The, that water, from the, from the moment that pro- that program began, there was at least from our perspective, an understanding that that water would have to be repaid at some point in time. So it wasn't as if there was a reserve or a pot that we were dipping into. We recognized that, that there was a need for projects to move forward. And so we created a process in the interim pending our negotiations with AVAC to come up with this means for securing long-term supplies to bridge that gap. That had always been intended though, when that program came back into place, when we finally got that worked out with AVAC, that the cities would work with us to replace whatever water had been given out under that program. Now that that program was in place, we didn't see any reason to make loans out of that again, rather use the program. Because the intent was that that program would be used to replace whatever water had been given rather than give out of that, just
So how do you, how does the mechanics of that work? Because the, the water service purchase agreement, $10,000 per unit is only for new projects. So of the, of the reserve, which I call it, maybe that's the wrong terminology, but those 1,000 units that, some of which have been allocated, are, and that have now been withdrawn, in effect, those projects are at risk unless the developer or the city or the combination thereof is willing to come up with the $10,000 per unit on top of all the other costs and fees and, and capitalization. That be about right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Just so we're clear, because the folks then who will follow you offering development opportunities, I'm sure they understand better than I do how the system's going to work. But we need to understand when, when these things come before us, right?
Yeah.
So it's only, it's only record maps, it's only record maps that have the reserve, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Whether they be a track map, a parcel map, residential, commercial, industrial.
Right.
If they ha- if they have a record map, the only way they were able to record that in this city was, was to have your commit, yours, the water district's commitment to supply.
Correct.
Right?
Right.
So if that map hasn't reverted to acreage, they're home free. Well, that's a probably a bad term.
There, there is water for their project.
There's water for their project and that's a commitment but not a reserve.
Correct.
So for instance, let's just say the, that you can't provide that commitment when, when that project comes online, what happens?
Uh, there would be no reason why we would not be able to make that commitment.
Well, if, if the, the carryover didn't happen, the, the banking didn't happen or the deficit, I mean
That number is based on the long-term reliability of the state water project. So when we talk about the amount of demand that we have plus the amount So when we talk about the amount of demand that we have, plus the amount of commitments that we have, the amount of water that we have from groundwater and the amount of water that we would expect over the long term from the State Water Project will cover those.
Okay. And your ongoing rules and regulations give the Water District the authority not to withdraw service, but to reduce the volume, if you will, or acre foot, acre feet of water to a project. And that would be done district-wide on some formula yet to be established.
So under the rules and regulations, we have the ability to determine what the, well, the per customer or per billing unit use.
Whatever, whatever that is.
Correct.
And that's in place? You don't have to go back to your directors to discuss that?
Correct.
There's no authority beyond your own administrative authority to do that?
We have that authority currently.
Okay.
But in order to initiate a particular level, we would need to go to the Board to initiate that.
You're talking water conservation.
Right.
He's talking about the water demand. If demand goes down to .8 acre foot rely.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Rather than 1.2 acre foot rely.
Yeah. So I know there's been some discussion about the, you know, we all calculate it, I think, a little differently. The majority of the users are residential properties. And some calculations say it's less than seven tenths of an acre foot. Others say it's 1.2. Some say it's 9.5. What's the real number as far as the Water Works District's concerned?
Well, we have been using 1.2. But we have seen data that suggests a better number is 1.0.
It's what?
1.0.
1.0. And you have others that would claim that it's less than eight tenths?
Yeah, there are other people who claim it's less than that. But from our perspective and the data that we're looking at, 1.0 is probably a better number than 1.2.
Okay. So I think we're concerned, one of the things we're concerned about is new construction and new development opportunities, whether they be commercial, industrial, or residential. In the development process, the end result is the, is the setting of a meter and providing service to the ultimate user. But prior to that, there's a substantial amount of treated water that's used to develop the project, if I heard you correctly. That's a concern. I mean, it's a concern of mine. I think it's a concern of a lot of people, taking that valuable treated water that costs 400 and some odd dollars per acre foot and use it for grading, use it for dust control and all those other things. And it's not just the development community, it's the public sector, your division, all of Public Works, our Public Works sector. So when there's conversations about withdrawing construction meters, that affects us all. And I would assume, and I don't know this, but maybe you can tell me, I would assume if that ever happens, that everybody would be treated the same. Everybody that pulls water, treated water for construction purposes would be treated the same. Is that the way you all see it?
Yeah, that's actually happened in the past.
Yeah, I'm aware it has, yeah.
Yeah, so on the ideas we did pull, we said, okay, no more construction usage. And they're typically short periods of time. It wasn't the same situation exactly we have now, but it's been done from time to time. We do try to be as fair.
I recall siphoning water out of the aqueduct into tanks and, not a lot of fun.
It's not something we like to do. It's a last resort measure. But if your tanks are going dry and you're, especially back in the day when you had maybe 80 million gallons a day coming out.
But I just want to be sure that the entire, quote, "development" community, not just the folks for profit, the Public Works people, the folks that go out and grade the swales and spray water all over them to keep the dust down, all of those folks are all going to be treated the same if and when that ever happen. I mean, that's what I want to be assured, that we're all going to be in the same boat together. We're not just going to, well, we're not going to, we're going to accept or exclude certain segments of.
Well, if there were exclusions, there was the cities, maybe the road, but people that had unsecured meters, you know, maybe for street sweeping or for sewage and so forth, public health type of issues that we have excluded.
I think the answer to your question is it would depend on the severity. The rules would be applied equally. What the rule is would depend upon the severity of the situation we were confronting. So if it was a situation as what we were seeing as of four weeks ago, where we decided we weren't going to issue any more construction meters, but we allowed those people that had them to maintain them. Had the situation been more dire, we would have pulled those meters from even the people who were already using them. So moving forward, whatever the situation's going to be that we would be addressing, the rule would be applied uniformly.
And that's only in 40?
37, Acton as well.
And 37.
So I have a, on a personal note, I have a school project that breaks ground in a week with about two months worth of mass grading. So what you're telling me is we're not going to get a construction meter?
You know, because the state just this weekend, literally it was Friday morning, granted us the 5% allocation, we may take another look at the construction meter policy. We have not today done that. But we may take another look at that and make a change to it now. What that change may be, we had some discussions about, you know, if you had intended to haul water from the start, maybe we say you continue to haul water, but it's recycled water. Otherwise, it's business as usual for most folks. Now, again, we haven't had the discussion internally and made that decision formally. But the fact that we got a 5% allocation is not a lot of water, it's enough that it makes a difference to us in this particular setting.
It'll make quite a difference to a public school district, that's for sure.
I'm sure it would.
Well, make sure I've got all mine. Okay, there may be some more. Anyone else have any questions, comments? All right. How about staff? Any of our staff have any questions or comments they'd like to make? No? All right. Again, thank you so much for sharing your time and the information today. Very informative, and we're very appreciative of the fact that you folks were able to come today and present. I'm assuming you're going to be presenting to other agencies, City of Palmdale probably.
Yeah, I'll tell you, when we originally set this up, it was in light of the zero allocation, and worse than that, the carryover water that Craig had talked about, the state initially had been saying they were going to zero that out as well. This was going to be preparatory to us taking mandatory water conservation pricing as an action, which is why we started to, hey, we got to get the word out, let people know this is coming. Fortunately, the situation's improved. We are still on the calendar, I believe, in May to speak to the City Council, basically give you just a slightly revised, give them a slightly revised version of what you saw. Similarly, we'll be reaching out to the City of Palmdale as well with the same basic information.
We're all in the same service area, that's for sure.
We are.
Well, again, thank you very much. I don't know if we have any public comments. We will have some public comments, so if you don't mind waiting a few moments, all right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the opportunity as well.
We have one speaker card?
Yes.
Maria Pizano.
All right, thank you. Ms. Pizano, and welcome.
I know I only have three minutes here, so my concern here, when I came, why I came here today, when I saw that they were going to speak on the issues, the water issues and the drought issues, I don't feel that there is really drought issues. It's the way that the water is being used and what it's being used for. I know that this has happened over and over again. In 1966, here, they had the, I don't know if you're familiar with the pinstripe, was what it was called, where they dropped, they dropped some chemicals or whatever in bombs in some of the wells, which contaminated the whole area out here. A lot of the farmers and stuff had to leave because they said there was no water. And everything pretty much dried up around here. It was, you know, a lot of the trees and everything, I mean, it was a bad situation and they had to, they were supposed to have cleaned that up and brought it back, brought everything back at that time. Well, it went on like another 20 years, I guess. But what ended up happening then was the money was not put into those particular projects, I guess you could say. I mean, if they worked for a while, I guess things kind of came back. But now what we have is the same thing pretty much happening over, where for one, the Topco Company, which, all this is to get to resources, to get to, either it's for, I'm sorry, hold on, either it's to get to certain resources, to use resources, or it's being used for things such as, this happens every time I come up here and I don't know why. Like I said, I'm concerned with the way, what's the way things are being used. Like I said, with Topco, we have petrochemicals, gas processing, reservoir engineering, drilling and well. And the water that's being used for even fracking or for the chemical processes is what's causing a lot of this water to be gone. For instance, on 395 out there, all that water was drained so that they could get to some of the minerals and the resources that were there, which pretty much killed everything in that area. It's what we see here too, around this area now.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Pizano. Your time has expired.
See, I know. See, this is what happens every time, because I know I only have so many minutes and I'm trying to like.
Your time has expired. Please take your seat, ma'am. Ma'am, please take your seat. Thank you. All right, do we have any other speakers?
There are no additional cards.
All right, thank you. At the beginning of the meeting, I should have pointed out that Mr. Lukey is on another assignment today. And thank you for being here, so, thank you. And Ms. Corbett, no lawsuits to file today? Great, thank you. Not that we're ever involved in any, right? Do we have any director's announcements?
None at this time.
All right, thank you. For the commission's agenda, anything from anyone? I would point out that I did attend the S-Power Groundbreaking on April 10th, the summer solar facility that we recently approved, well, recently, a couple of years ago, for a 17-megawatt solar project out on the west side of 93rd and G, I believe. So, anyway, it was quite interesting, that particular project. You know, we've had some concerns about mass grading and scraping the ground and all the dust problems and so forth. And they've actually, they're actually doing a much better job in limited grading and keeping the vegetation under control. Ms. Swain's been on them like a blanket, right? They've done a very good job with your oversight and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Mr. Neal, I'm sorry I didn't acknowledge your presence here today, but thank you for being here today and undoubtedly arranging the Water Works District coming to visit with us today, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, if there's nothing further, all right, we stand, well, public business from the floor and non-agendized items, do we have any of those? No, okay. So we stand adjourned till a special meeting for agenda review on Monday, May 12th, 2014, at 5:30 PM in the planning conference room here at City Hall. Thank you.